Alright, thank you for coming everybody. If you all would please join me in the pledge of the flag, which is right behind you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now if you could bow for a moment for a silent prayer. Amen. Thank you all for that. Thank you all for coming tonight. We have Thanksgiving dinner tomorrow, so we called this special meeting to get our things done today. And we're glad you all made it out. So the first item on the agenda is a road call. You have your reports? The only one absent is John. The next thing is to go over the minutes from our meeting on October the, I have the 16th, is that not right? Is it the 15th?
It is the 15th.
Okay.
I'm making motion to accept those.
Do I have a second?
Awesome.
Any discussion at all guys? Alright, all those in favor say aye. Thank you all very much. Now we'll move on to the treasurer's report, the financial statements.
I have a question. Tara Kelt, the ABC administrator, those payroll expenses, we voted three months ago to do away with her.
It's standard. And that's what we will, we will vote on that tonight.
Vote on?
Terminating that.
We did that.
And that's, it was November as her last name, so it's this month?
I think it was earlier than that, but I don't have my meet minutes with me.
Yes, that's the end of that.
Should've been in August.
Yeah, from August to November is 90 days.
So we won't see that again next month?
No, we're not. But we do have deputies that are working.
For the?
For the ABC, yeah.
Are we paying them yet?
Yes.
You probably won't see it in that one.
How much are we paying them again?
It is like $20 an hour, I think. Is it $30 an hour?
So that's been, that's costing us money through the alcohol.
I think it'll be temporary.
Did it cost us money, or that?
I think the county will go wet.
Uh, no, no, for a long time it won't. Not before we run out of money and have to start going to the general fund for that.
And that, that is something though, that we probably should define with the sheriff's department, what hours. Because right now they work the hours they want, and maybe that's a conversation to be had, that what hours they work. You know, you guys, I'm sure you have ideas about when you would rather see them out and about, and what kind of hours that is. Because we did not set any kind of hours. You know, it was just when you can.
So what have they charged us for already?
Uh, there was Deputy Jim Mitchell has charged us for his patrolling around town a few times.
Can you help with the time sheet?
Yeah, 'cause he does bring in a time sheet. But that, that is a conversation to have to say, okay, we want you X, Y, or Z, you know, whatever those days are, and whatever those hours are.
Fair enough.
Yeah, and whatever, yes, whatever those hours are, and then you can kind of get an idea of how much a month you can agree with on that.
Well...
And I'm sure that's a new, that's a new agreement that'll have to be worked out with the county and the city anyway.
I'll just go on record again to say, I'm not against anybody that wants to drink or buy it, but it has done nothing but cost us money, and that was a bad move.
It's, uh...
Supposed to help us.
Oh yeah, that was the whole intention. It's helped the businesses.
Yeah, it's helped the businesses.
Yes.
And two people that they hired extra. And it's costing us more than it would to hire three people.
Our report is neither. Alcohol kills more than drugs. Kills more people than drugs.
That is, that is true. Yeah, that is true.
Well, that's, you know, it's kind of true. Hard water there.
So if the county ever decides to go wet, I'll be sure to be the first one to tell them that it'll cost them more money than it's ever worked.
It depends. Because if you have the population, you can get the revenue.
Well then why?
And that's what hurt, that's what hurt better, was we don't have the population. You gotta have, uh...
Can we repeal it?
Oh yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, sure could. You could put another amendment on the ballot.
Have you heard any reports on some of them? It's been business-wise, it's been approved, their income has been...
Yes, yes, yes. John Woods is tickled to death with it. Yeah.
If we could put a tax on it, that'd be one thing.
And right, and I understand, you know, that we can't be taking money out of our general account to, to keep this thing up. But yeah, it does do good for the businesses. And does it do good for the city? No, not so much. But the, the alcohol-related incidents are way down in the county as opposed to when it was dry. And, and I think that speaks volumes about the access to it. You know, as opposed to somebody who is drinking a few beers and decides to go to Carrollton and get more, and then they cross the double yellow line and kill some innocent family. So I think in a lot of ways, it has, it has had a benefit. But what is the cost? So the city spends a little more money, and, and I understand that. So maybe the county will go wet and there'll be revenue. Alright, so do you guys want to approve these financial statements?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept them.
Do we have a second? Very good. Alright, all those in favor? Aye, aye, pass. Alright, next thing on the agenda guys is commissioner reports. So Harold, I'll start with you. You got anything on the sanitation?
No problems. Sound like a burning place, huh?
Good, good. Alright, Camie, we'll go with you with the cemetery.
Um, we had a dedication for the Veterans Memorial that's at the cemetery yesterday. He and we did a really good job putting that all together and getting things organized. We had a pretty good turnout. Everything seems to be going well. Haven't heard any complaints. We voted a few months ago to get that light for the top of the flagpole. Is it there?
Uh, Jim?
I have purchased the light last week. I'm gonna grab it. I am not putting it up yet. I'm not happy with it. The light that y'all chose to purchase, one I go around four inch pole, I'm gonna have to make a bracket and a kicker and put the light on it.
Would it be cheaper to send it back and buy another one?
It was only $39 and something, I'm not sure, but I think we, I was doing it, I was in a rush for your dedication, then when I seen the dedication included, I wasn't such in a rush, so I haven't done nothing with it yet. I would like to propose we put a light either on the building shining over to the flagpole, or we go ahead and pull electric.
Wire.
Pull it over and one of those stabilizer lights like you see around places, shining up on the flagpole.
Would be the most...
It's probably gonna cost you an extra hundred dollars from what you're gonna spend anyway, but it's a one and done thing. And with that flagpole, I think if we put this on there, it's gonna be disrespectful, in my opinion. So there it is, I can use it. I'll do whatever you tell me.
It'd just be easy to put it on South building and hang it at the flag.
That's what I would think, and it's gonna have to be a fairly bright light now whether or not the medevac out here is gonna fuss at us or whatever, if it's shining up like that, I don't know. I say we put it up, and then if they say something, we...
Deal with it from there?
The only thing, you know, they could use that as an LZ out there, there are several places out there, they could use that to land the helicopter if there was many in ambulants, but as close as the helicopter is now, and on site LZ is probably, don't have them very often like it did when I used to.
So would that be something you could buy at Lowe's and put up, or that light?
Yes, I could buy it at Lowe's and I can do it. I am not an electrician. I can't wire it up unless we do something very simple, as put it on a plug, and I plug it in like you plug in a lamp, then I can...
Can you get one that's, with a sensor that comes on at dark?
Yes. Yes, they make this.
Well, I'm gonna make a motion that Jim goes ahead and buys one that's on a sensor that he can plug in and go ahead and put that up wherever he can.
Can maybe get a timer.
Yeah, well, it'd be...
If it has a sensor in it?
Yeah, I don't know, it's all I'm like, I think you either have to make a choice another time or a daylight dark sensor, I just think it'll...
Right, if you want the other one.
I may be wrong, but I always come along with it.
Well, I'll leave it up to you to pick one.
Yeah, you figure it out.
Photocell probably be simpler. Photocell would be simpler.
Yeah, I like that stuff.
So I'll make a motion for Jim to go ahead and buy what he thinks will work best on a plug with a sensor and, and get that put up.
Do you wanna, I can't get off saying this, my wife would be proud of me.
Capping.
Do you want to give me a budget? I think it'd be safer for you, well, I don't give you safe house dollars.
Well, no, I'm not gonna say that. I'm very frugal, so...
Put something on there as a budget.
You know, I would say 50 bucks maximum, but then again, well, that's what I see.
I'd say 200, yeah.
Yeah, put big cap on it.
200 max then.
Yeah.
I'll be glad, I'll go with a cap for you.
We got a motion on floor to spend $200 on this flagpole thing and return the other one. Second?
Let's see.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Good job.
Jim, if I, if I did give you everything, she gonna be getting that.
Yeah, to return it.
Was it if you gave me that one?
No, it's, I'll give it to somebody.
Well, it's probably used at Lowe's.
Did you get that at Lowe's?
Yes, it's on, it's on...
So you can just take it back there?
Yes, I'll see Lowe's.
Alright, anything else for the cemetery, Tammy?
Oh, I think that's it. Oh, yes, there was, I'm sorry. The mapping and everything that we're doing, and we got the stakes in the ground and everything?
Not completely.
Can we suspend that until spring? We'll wait till spring and finish it up.
Okay.
So we'll just suspend that until April, let's say April?
Hopefully the snow is gone.
Yeah. When the weather gets better, so we'll suspend all that until April to finish up the mapping. I'll make a motion, we suspend that till April?
Yeah.
Awesome.
Alright, and all those in favor? And what she's talking about is those stakes to mark the roads. Yeah, very nice. And I will add to what Camie said about the Veterans Memorial dedication. She worked on it too, and it was very nice. Had we known it was good weather, it would've been nice at the cemetery, and there's several, several markers coming, and it's gonna look very good out there. Alright, next guys is about the FEMA declaration from 2015. We have worked with Clay Kelly on this, we worked with Kentucky and Kentucky Emergency Management. The intention was back when this was started, is if we could do little ticket items, and then as we get reimbursed, we do more projects. FEMA has since said that they want this whole thing completed by August of 2019, or we do not get reimbursed at all. Now, they have, and I told them, look, we're a small town, six, 700 people, we don't have that kind of money laying around. They said they would work with us to help us get pieces reimbursed so that we could continue to work on projects, but we have to get the whole thing done. There, there are several things done, but what is left is the big ticket items. So we need some kind of reimbursement before we can even begin to work on those. And we can also work with our contractors, some of them maybe, about partial payment to them, as they're willing to do. But my question to pose to you all is, do you want to complete this project? Because I will not be here, and it's gonna be Joe, it's gonna be you all. Do you all want to complete this project?
I don't look like we have a choice.
Do we have a commitment from them in writing that they...
We do not.
What's this gonna cost us? Do you have any idea?
Uh, we got some ballpark numbers here.
I mean, yeah, give us a...
Uh, just ballpark, I'm thinking that when the whole thing is done, it's probably gonna, it's, they say $461,000. And I think that was a very high estimate, wasn't it Jim?
Yeah, I think it was over $1,000.
Yeah, and you know, based on our work with local contractors, there's some, some of these little projects that, that we had done, they had priced a lot higher than what we actually got on, got the job finished for, which was a big help to us, and I explained that to them. You know, that $461,000 is like pie in the sky, and I felt like we could get it done a lot cheaper because we use local people, and, and we've been able to do that, and I think we'll continue to do that.
The trouble then was South Carolina maybe had a lot of problems, and all the money was, it was ventured going down there. And I, I think the large projects was overwhelming, you know, for our...
Well, what, what has happened is FEMA released the funds to Kentucky Emergency Management. They have the funds, and that is who we're working with now to get this stuff done. So they're, they're not pulling from Kentucky to take the South Carolina. That's not happening.
So on these projects that are done, can we turn those into them?
Yes, yes.
And do we have paperwork to do that?
Yes.
Filled out and all the receipts?
Already sent to them.
It's already sent?
Yep.
How long ago has that been?
I think last week or two weeks ago, probably two weeks ago. And Clay Kelly is still, continues to work on this. That's something that Joe coming in would need to sign an agreement with, and you all give him the approval to sign an agreement with Clay Kelly, that Clay can continue to work with this. He speaks their language. He understands the work that needs to be completed. He's filed the quarterly reports that we needed to file on time, and so I would really recommend it, keeping Clay on top of this.
Is there an existing agreement that just has to be extended, or?
This one, yes, anyone, this is the agreement.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's the one that would be August of 2019.
And when would we expect to be reimbursed for what we already have done?
Uh, they told me to email them tomorrow if the commission agrees or disagrees to continue with the work or not to continue with the work.
How much?
And then I don't, and they'll say something, I don't know what they'll say.
What's the reimbursement that you're requesting?
It is, we would get 75% back from Kentucky Emergency Management or FEMA, and 12% back from the state. So it's an 87% reimbursement.
Do you have a total dollars of what we've already spent?
I, I wanna say we turned in like close to $50,000. So it's gonna be, it's gonna be very slow, but just staying on top of it. And especially when you're into these big ticket items.
The bridge, they're thinking the treatment plan, it's gotta be...
Absolutely, and that's part of it.
But I mean, there ain't no way around it.
So at 87%, we'd expect $43,500 in reimbursement for that.
It's just what's completed now.
Right, just what we've completed now. But we can use that to do the next project.
They're not gonna give us anything until it's all completed.
No, 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 they'll pass, but in chunks.
Right.
Yeah.
So what, the $50,000 that was turned in last week would be...
Right.
$43,000 we could work with on the next little piece, and then?
And then the next little piece, yeah, turn it in, and, yeah, and wait, hurry up and wait. But it's gonna have to be really hurry up.
Well, that'll be on then, I mean...
And it's gotta be completed, there's not way to get...
Yes, it will be on then, yeah.
You don't think I forget, Jim wants that road raised?
Right.
Do you want asphalt?
Well, that's, asphalt's gotta go. Uh, that's something he and I talked about earlier. You know, this is not the time of year to do asphalt, so...
What would be the next, the next project in this list that we would have to look at doing?
Concrete.
I don't know that you're gonna be able to do any of them that's left before what you're gonna reimburse.
Till spring.
You're gonna have to go over there. Probably the cheapest one that's gonna be born here is the security fence, but we can't do it until we do the asphalt, because the fence is in the asphalt.
Alright, that's like the last thing.
Yeah, well, it's gonna have to stare at some of this stuff. We're gonna put some in front of the other. May have put some higher in front of the others, which is obvious. But these aren't the big ticket items. These are the bulk of their estimates of $460,000. And again, that's their estimates, they have something high. I got an idea with some cost, but it's probably best I keep that myself. As far as raising the road, as you was talking about, it was, the road was raised prior to 2015 here, and if we put it back to what we had, the road needs to be raised back up. That being said, unless we raise the road, road back up, we put this in, we get another three or four inch rain, I'm gonna be standing here looking, you guys gonna do this again? That's fine for me. Since that channel was designed down there, there's been so much development, like here behind the church, after Shane Manon was, and that was developed, that was done there. The fields are full of water, everything else, now, everything back there, I'm saying, oh.
So did we get any entrance money from that last?
And that guy was supposed to be here Wednesday, and I wasn't, we left...
What worries me is...
But he's coming with a check.
Extreme weather is always changing, some bad. We have extreme weather one way or another. We never have normal like we used to. We could have one pretty quick.
Yeah.
That's what worries me about that.
So what kind of check was he supposed to bring us?
I don't know, I was looking up his email to see what he said.
That goes into the general fund anyway.
Yes, 'cause that's where we took it out of. Yeah. I, I wanna say it was like $17,000 that we spent. That's not my email.
So we already fixed that damage?
Part of it's been fixed twice.
Right, since the flood.
Yes. The FEMA thing, we had fixed, that's in all of the course that they got us.
Pretty quick.
And then they done it again recently, and then they had to fix it again, this time nature's gonna be stable. First time nature's gonna be hostile. Then they went back in and fixed it again. And that's what I'm saying, if we don't raise the road, we're gonna have to...
Or put a wall.
Yeah, yeah, we gotta have water, it's gotta be infected somehow.
Now, is any of that on this list, the raising the road, or not?
Yeah, it is.
Uh, it should be, because it was like that when it, I think I seen on the order, they got road width, took out approximately 18 inches, and I don't know what exactly they were showing about, but it took out...
Camie, it's the last one.
Several feet of that road width. And what we done, and we did not have a choice in matter, well, it took the higher load out for us, and it forced it out down to here. We had to gravel this, so we had access.
I think it's like six feet.
We did, we lost all this, we never gained it back, that's why now, inch and a half rain, I got everything on and looking good and neat.
So we should do that one first?
It's gonna be the one that's expensive, but yes.
Yeah, put that wall up there.
It's gonna be the most expensive.
That concrete channel, steam bank, stable, uh, stream bank stabilization.
There's only one cheap item on here that I've seen, and that's the fan and cooling branch.
Yeah.
And I spoke to him about, I remember what the number was, I'm not, I don't know, that's the only cheap item on here. And the reason that has not been done, it's not because you all didn't give your money to it, it was because that, well, it kinda is, 'cause I'm gonna hit you for the whole lot of my money, because that fan is not made, nor that size of fan is made no more, and it is in a concrete wall. Concrete walls gotta be modified, whether we... Every fan's smaller than, it's gotta be modified, because that fan's not loaded anymore.
And how much is it gonna cost us to raise that road, approximately, just?
If you're gonna do it the way they're gonna reimburse it, a lot. Because what they require to be done, if that road was on my farm, I could do it for a grand. I'm gonna take a wild guess, $60 grand.
How much?
For you, I'm, that's kind of what they were looking at, I mean...
Yes.
I don't know those planetary numbers, I mean, it's been...
It's shooting dark, but yeah, that's probably right.
So this looks like the sewer pumps getting pushed back further.
Yeah. Well, no, you still got the project of, of that expansion, and included in that project was some new pumps, wasn't it Jim?
Yeah, that's a different thing than what this is.
It's a hundred percent different. Yeah, that's what Kipta and Community Development...
I'll say, I'll have my two cents worth on this whole thing, and then I, unless y'all think nothing, I'll stay out of it, we all go on. If we don't, if you all know you're gonna get your reimbursement, you have no choice to do this.
I agree, I'm just worried that we're not gonna get the reimbursement.
That's what I...
You have no choice of doing this, if they're not.
I mean, they gonna get there.
Where, this bridge is falling in every day down here, more and more. Y'all come down here, you've seen it, we can pile gravel on it, any morning, we're gonna pull it down there, and it's gonna be gone. You have no choice but to do this.
Whether we get reimbursed or not.
Now, do you have to do it for their specs, or they require you to do all this geofabric, all this silly stuff that they ask you to do? Or, and I hate to say this, but you choose to not play that game and fix it your way and direct your strength up there, that's something that'll happen.
And that's a valid point.
Not bad.
Yep.
So if...
It's a very good point, 'cause it does have to get done no matter what.
If we don't do it that way, we gonna get reimbursed.
That's, that's true.
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause they will send somebody out to inspect.
If they do it, if we do it our way, and it's...
Not inspect.
Good enough...
Oh yeah.
And it'll work, is that the difference between the... And it'll work, is that the difference between the, I mean, would it be cheaper than what reimbursement we're gonna get?
Yes, wouldn't you say?
Probably would, wouldn't it?
If you're gonna get reimbursed eighty-seven percent, I'm gonna actually don't do it.
Okay.
Because if we go the other way, we're gonna have to expense every bit of it.
Yeah, that's true.
And I'm not scared to do it, the road is out, done it kinda my whole life, the bridge is a little bit different, surely.
Because you have to have access in there while they're fixing it.
Yeah, the bridge is a little bit, the bridge were worrying me.
Yeah, so it'd be better to follow their specs a little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It would, the bridge were worrying me, I have to be honest.
And Clay, I think, is the one that drew up those, what those specs should be.
Yes, he is.
Could he come and talk to us and tell us what he thinks?
Absolutely, he had, uh, he, Tori's a Keely's tendon, so he, he's kinda gimpy right now, he's not driving yet, or he would've been here tonight.
I spoke to him about it.
Yeah.
I agree, it all has to be done, e- especially if we're ever gonna expand, but, gosh, I want some concrete, yes, you're gonna get reimbursed as you go, I mean, if we spend sixty thousand dollars, and we do that first, and can count on that reimbursement, then we can muddle through until August.
Yes.
But I want concrete, I kinda want concrete evidence that we're gonna get that back.
We can't do it unless we got a promise.
If, if you, yeah, we could chunk it out now, like I mentioned earlier, there's some things on there, it's gonna be more your reimbursements gonna come, I'm gonna have to say, okay, guys, y'all told me I got reimbursement, but I need thirty more thousand for it, until they reimburse us the next time, and you're gonna get it back.
Right.
We are.
Right.
If, you know you're gonna get it back.
It's, you know, you're gonna get it back.
Right.
You're gonna catch one, and they're forcing your hand by tomorrow.
Yeah, go ahead, Joe.
Uh, one thing to look at too, with all these stats they require, I know that it's federally regulated, what it's gonna be, if we don't put this stuff back in to their specs, and within a certain time limit, are we gonna incur penalty penalties because the sewer system?
It won't be penalties, they just won't reimburse us.
Yeah, but I mean, if they don't even check it, and if things aren't up to specs, won't we get fined for it?
No, they won't get that, they just won't pay us, yeah.
If they didn't reimburse you for it, they have no concern.
Right, but they will come inspect.
I just know that rules off certain regulations, you have to be going down there, if this is affecting any of your regulations.
Right.
They're gonna be in this one.
Right, they just will not reimburse us if it's not done to their satisfaction.
If they reimburse you, they will, they might do.
Yes.
I wonder if they're gonna be willing to give us something in writing?
Maybe tomorrow when I email and say, hey, we're good, can you give me something in writing? That says, that I can pass on to my commissioners, uh. Jessica.
I mean, I guess it'll tell the story if we're gonna get reimbursed with this first bunch of bills we sent in.
Yeah.
That will be, that will be.
You could look at it, so I don't think we'll cut it off since that point, if we don't have it, and do it down the way, it's gonna be.
Yeah, I don't think we can.
It's gonna be a little expensive.
Yeah, that would be, yeah.
Might be one of them, if you, I can't say that you can, bills are off the pot, you know?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. There's no easy way out here. None at all.
See if they got anything they can sell at the yard sale.
Community yard sales?
They'll take donations.
Mm-hmm.
I agree, we gotta be thick, I just, I mean, it's gotta be done, but I worry some big.
'Cause I'm like.
Well, I make a motion that we do.
Okay.
With the exception that you get that, all right.
Yeah. Yeah.
But if that scares them, it's gotta be done.
Whether or not, yeah, whether or not, and that's the very unfortunate part.
Right.
Especially that bridge.
Exactly.
I must admit, I'll second it with the condition that they give us something and, that we can count on.
Something we can look at, God bless you, make a wish.
All right, and see if Clay Kelly can make it to our next meeting in December and.
And he should be good.
Make us feel better about it.
How did he say he was today, Jim?
He was eating, when I talked to him.
Did he say he's driving or no?
He did not say, but, uh, uh, we had a discussion, maybe it's a reminder, but, yeah, he's, he's, he's got another car tomorrow.
Oh, good, good. All right, we have a motion and a second, and all those in favor, aye, all right, unanimous, thank you very much.
And maybe by tomorrow's meeting, we'll know something.
Yes, and it's very likely. Uh, City Hall will be closed on Thursday, November twenty-second, and Friday, November twenty-third, and observe it for Thanksgiving. Code enforcement officer, uh, Jordan has brought his badge back, and, uh, I am going to, uh, talk to fiscal court about doing an inter-local agreement between the cities of Milton and the cities of Bedford, to let the county code enforcement officer do the cities as well. Milton struggles with the same thing, um, what do you all think about that? Because I'll come back to you with that plan.
Yeah, I'll be thinking, I'll think.
Yeah.
Yeah, I will. Will we do it all for one price, or we paying too?
No, he'll get, he'll be getting paid through the county, and he'll, he'll already be on the beat anyway.
Sound good.
All right, uh, street closures for Light Up Bedford. The, uh, street closures are Church Street from four twenty-one to West Street. And that is it, yeah, we will have a parade, uh, come through town about four thirty, Jim, if you wanna be in the parade? It is December first, that's at four thirty. You'll be up here selling your lights, your, uh, buckets, maybe, is your wife doing it?
Oh.
Oh.
Were you having a craft thing?
Yes.
I'm sorry, wait on me.
I think we have, I think we have seven vendors, uh, that have committed so far, so if anybody knows any more vendors that wanna do that, uh, more the merrier.
Yeah, I'll be your example.
Yes, good, all right, uh, the next one, guys, is the planning and zoning. The county, uh, fiscal court this morning had the second reading of the planning and zoning ordinance, and, uh, it is my recommendation that we follow suit with the county at this time, uh, there, there will probably be changes later, but at the present, there is not, and, uh, I think it's probably better that we go along with them to, to stay in, in the same step with them.
I make a motion, we opt in on it.
And this is a voice vote thing, so.
Right. Well, there's several things in it I don't agree with, and just.
I think there is, there are all of us.
There is.
But I may have a spot all in the middle of a bunch of water.
Right.
And that's what this city will be.
Yes, it would.
I mean, it's a done deal, so. I gotta say, go ahead, Bill.
All right, we have a motion and a second, and, uh, this is to have our first reading, by the way, so it's not voice vote. So all those in favor of having the first reading of the summary, uh, of the planning and zoning ordinance for the county, say aye. And oppose, no, okay.
Zoning ordinance, Trimble County, Kentucky, ordinance number, do we know what ordinance number it is? Jennifer, do you know? Be it ordained by the City Commission of Bedford, Kentucky, whereas the Trimble County Fiscal Court adopted this zoning ordinance on November nineteenth, twenty eighteen, whereas the purpose of which is to divide the county of Trimble Commonwealth of Kentucky into districts of such shape and area as are deemed best suited to carry out these regulations, whereas the ordinance regulates the uses of buildings and land for residential and agricultural uses, or for business and other purposes, to prescribe penalties for violations, to provide for enforcement of the same, to implement a planning and zoning commission, and to implement a board of adjustments. Whereas, the ordinance proposes to further the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan previously adopted by the Trimble County Fiscal Court. Whereas, the ordinance is now before Bedford City Commission for adoption, now therefore, the Bedford City Commission finds that it is in the best interest of the cities, citizens of the city of Bedford, to adopt the following zoning ordinance for Trimble County, Kentucky. Introduced and given first reading and summary at a duly convene, meeting of the Bedford City Commission, Bedford, Kentucky, held on today.
All right, that's the first reading, guys, and the next item is, uh, Joanne's contract expires this month.
Did you sign that?
Um, no, that's just the first reading. The second.
Oh, this?
Yes.
Second reading.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right, so now you want, you need to read this?
Yes, this is the, the resolution to enter into a contract again with Joanne, um, so go ahead, Joanne.
Uh, resolution twenty eighteen, uh, dash four, resolution authorizing mayor to enter into contract for legal services for the city of Bedford, whereas it is the duty of the city commission to retain legal counsel, and whereas it has been determined that a contract between Joanne Pitch and the city of Bedford is necessary, now therefore, be it resolved by the city of Bedford, that the mayor is authorized to enter into a contract for legal services for the city of Bedford with Joanne Pitch to extend from November nineteenth, twenty eighteen, to June thirtieth, twenty, uh, nineteen. After full, a reading full on the nineteenth day of November, twenty eighteen, and on motion by, seconded by.
All right, we have a motion.
I make a motion, a second.
All right, and all those in favor, aye, that's four ayes.
Okay. Who's seconded?
Uh, here, or newt.
No, I may do it.
Yeah. All right, uh, this being a special meeting, we have no other, nothing else on the agenda, so, uh.
I have a couple things that I wanted to bring up before, since we're not gonna have much time tomorrow, and we need to get things cleared up, since you might not be here next month. Um, we voted to buy Jim a new laptop.
Right, and I, I passed it off, and I think we've done it.
And.
We will.
We have been for six months gonna get QuickBooks for payroll, I'd like to get that and start it in January, so we can have a full year.
That's what we decided the last time.
And if there, I mean, if there, there's a card we use or whatever, I can take care of buying all that and turning, you know.
It's ordered.
The QuickBooks thing is.
The QuickBooks, yeah.
It's ordered.
To start January.
And then Jim's laptop?
Yeah, and I haven't one to get it, uh, but I passed it off to get it, we'll get it.
Okay, that's just a couple things I could think of that we had voted on, that we hadn't followed through with, so. And so we can, in January is, uh, Melissa gonna be willing to input, or would you input on the QuickBooks for the payroll thing, or?
I probably have to.
Yeah, that, that's probably something she'll have to learn, yeah, and Melissa can show her. I forget what they do at the school, what do they use at the school, Peachtree or something like that, is that what she said? It's a little different, but she can figure it out.
There's a guy, there's a guy that's there that said, help me to, to QuickBooks.
You can always use two, but.
That's true, and we can get our neighbor, he used to teach a class in it.
Oh, okay.
Lee, Lee Conglue.
Oh, okay, I'm sure he'd help.
Mm-hmm, yeah, he's already volunteered, yeah.
So that should make things a little easier, probably have to buy new checks, where they print out.
Yes, and the stubs, which will be a big plus for.
Thank God.
Everybody, yeah, yeah, for everybody to have the stubs.
Okay, so we'll get that done and talk about it, make sure we get it all in order next month.
Right. And the audit, we are waiting on Razor's Avenue Woods, yeah.
Now, dude, was there an audit last year?
That's the one we're waiting on, okay. Uh, and what has been explained to me was, uh, Jeff Woods, who does ours typically, was hit by a car, broke both his legs, and then, uh, Dennis took it over, Dennis come over here, he got all the stuff, and, uh, I don't know what the holdup with them is now, but every time I've called, they have excuses.
Well, why don't we just get somebody else?
And, and well, that's what I think is, is caused the delay.
Is, uh, Jeff gonna be able, able well enough to do his stuff on the road or not, is he crippled?
Yeah, well, no, he's walking, uh, I think when we advertised, uh, last, last year, I think that's what slowed us down. When we advertised in the paper that we were looking for a new auditor, I don't, I don't know that, and I probably should've said.
The state probably provides double A contract with people?
Uh, yeah, yeah, there's a list of certified public account.
Maybe we should just go with, somebody new.
The last time, we, we had the same problem with Razor's Avenue.
Okay.
Over a year to get, to get a dollar done, and I, the last time, when I was, before I retired, there was a company in San Matthews, and called the extension office and.
Get that number from Jane?
They were there a few weeks, they were ready to do it before we were ready.
Oh, wow.
Get all the information, and they had done it within six weeks.
No kidding?
And they were very recent.
Well, I think it'd be a good idea to start fresh.
Um, make the best, like calling the state auditor, or the state manager, or.
And, and they, they can, but they're really busy, I know that, 'cause I called them a few years ago, and they weren't interested.
If I remember right, it was somewhere around fifteen hundred, two thousand dollars to have it done.
Oh, wow.
And it might've been a little bit, it might've been a little bit over that.
We have more money to do our store, yeah, that'd be great.
If he's right on that number, you might be aware of it.
Yes, it would.
I, I could be wrong.
He doesn't have the company.
Call it in.
I already checked it, yeah.
I have it, I have it.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, yeah, all right, what else you got?
Uh.
Well, it's not people.
Yeah, it probably would, but we just wanted that.
Get the name of them, or they're in San Matthews, and their contact, and contact is, they're ready to go right up in that.
I want to, I just let commissioners know that our permanent discharge ground plan expires, their body permits expires this coming year. Clay.
What month is that, Jim?
Uh, April, October.
Okay.
Uh, but Clay and I, or I and somebody in Clay's group, will be.
Probably Ryan.
Re-doing that and submitting it, 'cause if we don't have it any by early spring, we won't have the time block.
Joe, you making a note of that?
In other words, that thing you need to sign with Clay Kelly?
Yes.
Sign it.
Yes, yes, that's what that means, yeah, that's giving him the power to talk for you. Yeah, or the mayor, however you wanna word it there. All right, anything else, gentlemen, ladies?
So, are you gonna be here December first, or?
Uh, I, 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 uh, we, yeah, this could be my last meeting, uh, I understand that, uh, Jerry Powell is, uh, retiring as of November thirtieth, and, uh, uh, this, this may be my last meeting with the city commission, so, uh.
You would have to resign from here.
Yes, I will, I will resign from here, and I'll give you all those letters, uh, to that effect.
But then will there be no mayor for our, uh?
We will have mayor pro temp.
Okay.
Yeah, for the month of December, yeah, yep, that's exactly right.
I could be dangerous with power.
Who swears anything, man?
Uh, Joanne can.
I was gonna say, would, would Jeff, Dave swear anything?
Yeah, yeah, that or Joanne.
Yeah, I'm gonna say, I don't know, probably, if he's swearing anything.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know about.
I don't either, I don't keep telling people, it's, you guys, I've seen it done.
Right, it would be neat, yeah.
So we have to get swear in too, though?
You all do too, so I may have to, I may come back just for that.
Oh, boy.
Yeah, just to come swear you all out, yeah, yeah, I may do that, all right, yeah, so that's, that's it, it's been, uh, been a long time.
Out of the fire, Peter.
That's it, right into the fire, no better place to be, I'll be, uh, shed wreck, mueschak, and a bed and a goat.
You can come crawling back to us.
Really?
And you leave the city, what do you want to?
I wanna be in the city. All right, so. All right, so if there's nothing else to discuss?
We're gonna make a motion together.
Please do, and we have a second? All right, amen, thank you.